Second is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2020. This subcommittee hearing of the board is being held remotely via the WebEx platform. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices pages page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our inputs and meetings, we will hear meetings from elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and then community members. In the interest of time, we will hear more specifically from Director Butters. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click that icon and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand prior to the relevant address as this will just causes confusion. This is a subcommittee hearing. If your project is approved, if there is consensus among the three members of the subcommittee, you do not need to appear at the hearing on Thursday. However, if there is not consensus or if there is a deferral, we will hear your project at a later date. At this moment, I'm just going to take a quick roll call, roll call, Mr. Fortune.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Ms. Barazza.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. So why don't we get started?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call deferrals or withdrawals. Do we have any deferrals or withdrawals? If you do, give me the address, please. Okay, hearing none. I'm going to call the first case, calling DOA 115-8994, 296 Princeton Street. This is adding a green roof to a playroom area, basement completing bathroom, finishing space for additional storage, and relocation of the existing kitchen bathroom on the existing footprint. Second floor bedroom and bathroom remodel. Violation is Article 27 T-5. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 52, the roof structure restrictions. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Madam, Ms. Erin, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. My name is Andrea Villanova and I'm the homeowner of 296 Princeton Street. I have, I'm trying to renovate the house, doing some repair work and adding some square finished floor area. I am not changing the footprint of the existing structure. It's basically the footprint staying the same. I'm just changing the roof structure. And therefore, it's, it's basically, it triggers the roof structure restrictions and the floor area ratio.
The Ma'am, can you hold on for a minute? Is this a one or a two family?
A one, a one family.
Okay, excellent. And then, so how are you changing the roof?
If you go to the section, so this is the existing roof currently, it's the, so it on the first floor, the dining area is in the back. And on the second floor, the left-hand side bedroom, it's about seven feet. So I'm trying to add to that dining area, a second story so that the bedroom, the smaller bedroom can, it can be bigger and actually usable. And that's why I'm changing the roof, the roof.
Okay. And tell us about what you expect to do in the basement.
I want to add bathroom and possible area for my mom to sleep in. She has, she uses a wheelchair. And since this is a three-level house, the bedrooms right now are, you have to go three flights of stairs. So there's currently an entryway there. You see that under that main window. And the plan is to have her be able to enter through that door and have a space in the bottom area to, to stay in.
Okay, so let's ask you some specific questions about the basement. Tell us about the floor to ceiling height in that basement.
The floor to ceiling height is, I think it's a little bit over eight feet. It's, I don't, it's written there. I don't know.
Okay, and we'll, we'll get to that. And what is the space? Is there going to be a bedroom, a kitchen? What's going to be down there?
No kitchen. It's just going to be, it's going to be, there's going to be a bathroom. And an area that someone could sleep in. But while, while no one sleeps there, it's going to be most likely a play area for my two daughters.
Okay. And so, okay. Did you have a community process already?
I did. I had a Butters meeting and I had two presentations to the Eagle Hill Civic Association. And I had 34 to one vote of support.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
The plans are adequate.
And you're comfortable with having a possible bedroom in that basement?
Actually, I'm not. On the plans, it's labeled as storage. And where I'm assuming there's going to be a bedroom at the rear, there's really no windows. It's, there's
There's, there's windows.
So, so Ms. Villanova, can you hold on until Ms. Barazza finishes?
Sorry, yes. Sorry, I didn't, sorry.
So based on your section, I, on 4.0, so you go to 4.0.
I, I don't have
Okay, hold on, hold on.
Right, so if you go to 4.0, it's, it's butting against a foundation wall.
Are, are you asking me to go to 4.0?
No, we will, we are referencing it and we will get to it on the screen. You know, when we, we are not a big fans of bedrooms in the basement, especially if there's a handicapped person in that space. We need to very, very much make sure that there is a way that that person can get out of the space cleanly and without any issues if there, should there be a fire or any other emergency. And that's why we look very carefully to see that there are bedrooms. I mean, there are windows, so we know that it's livable. Yeah, so, so those are
Right here, right here, on 4.0, if you can see.
So these are the issues we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
Right there, you're seeing the basement unit butting to a foundation wall.
I see, yep.
Yeah, but that's only one side, right?
So if you go to your basement floor plan, if you go to your basement floor plan, versus storage on drawing a 2.0. Any access to the, to the rear, that's hitting a foundation slab. And then the last window, there is no egress window to, showing a window.
Okay, now, hold on. So ma'am, we have the drawing up.
Yeah.
Where is, so we see the, so the entrance, I assume, is through the mudroom. And then on the right-hand side, there's a storage room. And then from the mudroom, there's a door to the bathroom. And then in the rear, there's a large storage space. Yeah, is, hold on, which is the proposed bedroom?
So it's, it's my, I don't, no one lives with me, I guess. Like, that won't be, she doesn't, no one lives, my mom doesn't live with me. So if, it's not going to be like a bedroom at all times. There are two windows in that back space. So there's no, there's no foundation wall to the left of that, of that. There's a, there's a, there's, there's the full, almost those full-height windows on, at the bottom of that mudroom. That, you know, it's, it's, it, all those doors can be fully open.
The mudroom has windows, which are the correct size by code. But at the rear in the storage, you do not have an egress window if that storage were to be turned into a bedroom.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, then I don't, I don't have that into a bedroom, like, I don't.
Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support for this proposal. During the community process, this proposal received strong support from Eagle Hill Civic Association. And as well, we received 24 letters of support from our Butters and residents of Eagle Hill. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have those letters as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have one raised hand. Caller six, 617-899. You've been unmuted. Are you here to give testimony for this case? Hi, 617. Yep, we can hear you. Are you here to give testimony for this case?
I'm without knowledge of which case you're speaking.
Okay, so if you go, this is Okay, can you pull your hand, please? Thank you. Just press start to lower your hand. And I'm sure I have no additional.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve with a design proviso, BPDA design review, and with no bedroom units in the basement.
I will second that motion.
Is I too am in support, so you're all set with that, those two provisos? Okay, good luck.
Sorry, I don't know what that means.
Don't worry, just, you know, talk to somebody offline, okay? We need to move to the next case, okay?
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 114-1788, 1187 Saratoga Street. This is the correct and existing code violation of a basement unit by removing the basement kitchen and door unit separations between Unit 1 and basement, and then extend living space into the basement area from Unit 1 to connect directly into the first-floor unit and remove the rear second-floor interior stairs and construct a new exterior stair from the existing rear porch. The violation is Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
This person didn't sign on for the pre-check-in. I also don't see any raised hands for this one.
All right, I'll hold it off to the side just a second.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 11122-647-89 Russell Street. This is an existing basement to create livable space, increasing ceiling height and adding to the building gross square foot. The violation is Article 62, Section 8, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Patterson, 89 Russell Street. I'm the homeowner.
Okay, so please, so tell us, is this a one family or a two family?
It's a single family.
It's a single family? And tell us what you're proposing to do?
So we're, we're busy, we moved in here just over a year ago now. We want to renovate the building and a part of that renovation is finishing the basement to include a living area and a bedroom down there with an en suite bathroom to sort of just, I guess, to accommodate our future family and family visiting from overseas.
Okay, so tell us about the basement. Tell us what the floor to ceiling height is, what the floor to cell height is. And let's, and it, and let's just start there.
Sure. Right now, the ceiling height is plus or minus seven feet. It's low, there's a difference of about an inch as you move from the back to the front. And that's from the current floor to the underside of the joist. My hope is to get down to eight foot six adequate height. The sill height, sorry. I'm sorry, the sill height right now is around two and a half feet, I think. So the sill height at the very front will be increased by that extra foot, foot and a quarter. And then the sill height, I can't recall the sill height of the egress window at the back, but obviously that will be code compliant or, you know, dependent on code.
Okay, and tell us about that deck. Was that deck, has that deck been approved? Or what is the deal? Because we noticed that it has a headhouse.
Yeah, that, that deck's there now and has, has been there for as long as I can remember. We're not, we're not planning to do anything with the deck.
Okay, Tom, can you just check to see if that deck had come to this board in the past? Or if it was just, if it just appeared on the building, if that's possible, okay? Ms. Ms. Barazza, tell us a little, how are the plans?
The, the plans are adequate.
And you're comfortable with what they show in the basement?
I'm not comfortable with the bedroom at the rear, just with the fact that the window well is the only source of light in that bedroom. The sill height is noted on the plans, which is, you know, correct to code, is less than 44-inch height from the floor to the sill. But the proposed egress well is very tall, so it's about five foot six from grade. So I'm not comfortable with the bedroom at the rear. But at the front, there is adequate light, adequate access to the, to, to the front exit.
Okay. Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We have received a significant number of letters of support for this project and we would like to go on record in support of it.
Madam Chair, we have, the secretary here, we have letters of support as well.
Thank you.
I'm sure I have no raised hands.
Okay, Ms. Barazza, what do you think?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion forward to approve with BPDA design proviso and that the bedroom unit is not located at the rear of the building.
Well, I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So this is a note to the applicant. Please make sure that you work very closely with the BPDA so that in fact, if you're having family over, they're in the best and the safest place in that, in that basement. Okay, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 116-66306 Wall Street. This is a new 20 by 20 roof deck along the new rooftop, access stairs and hatch to access the deck. Violation is Article 62, Section 25, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Timothy Shan. I'm at 9 Wall Street in Charleston. I'm the architect for the project. Yeah, we want to put a roof, a 20 by 20 roof deck accessed by a hatch on a, on a roof, on a single-family house.
Okay.
The neighborhood, yeah, good, I'm sorry.
Thank you. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
The plans are adequate.
Anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We've seen, received one letter of opposition, but we received four letters of support, including Director Butters and those support letters. And at this time, our office would like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have opposition letters. And we have one support letter.
Yeah, Mr. Fortune, can you tell us very quickly what the opposition is based on?
Madam Chair, what I can see, they're opposed to the roof deck, obviously sunlight blocking their view into their bedrooms, the normal deck situations that we use.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have two raised hands. Caller five, you've been unmuted. That's 585737. Would you like to give testimony for this project?
I would, thank you. My name is Brian Bartlett. I'm the home, yeah, Brian Bartlett. I'm the homeowner at 6 Wall Street.
No, we, Mr. Shan is representing you, so we, we will defer to him. Ms. Ms. Ambassador, may we go to the next raised hand?
Sure, yep. Caller six, you've been unmuted. 617.
Thank you very much. I appreciate them, Madam Chair. I'm the Director Butters who number 6 Wall Street. I'm at number 7 Wall Street, madam. During the Office of Neighborhood Services meeting, the owner, attorney Brian Bartlett and his agents have stated bluntly that if there was all or nothing for this project. And as we can see with 62.25, they violate the setback, which says the pertinent structure must be one foot.
Excuse me, so tell me what your opposition is based on?
Yes, based on 62.25, it needs to be 16 feet back, based upon the building pertinent is 16 feet lower. Additionally, to their saying the project was all or nothing, they must also not be viewable from the street as per 62. Likewise, there must be removal from the side and from the rear for said project. Also, it's true that Mr. Fortune has stated that there is a grave concern regarding blocking of lights, sunlight blocking into the road. Continue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mr. Shan, can you respond to the issues that you've heard about viewable from the street and the setback?
Sure. You won't see it from the street because it's only going to be four and a half feet high. And I've got it six feet, 10 inches back from the parapet edge. The requirement is that, you know, we hold it back a foot for every foot it's above the roof surface. So I know, I mean, I lived on the street my whole life. You won't see it from the street. I don't know what the other issue was, blocking, I don't, I don't know how it's going to block anybody's light. It's just a, no, structure up 12 inches.
Got it. Okay, so anybody else to speak on this proposal? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that approval. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 116-4273, 2 Lawnwood Place. This is for a new private roof deck for Unit 2, access through a hatch and its new set of stairs. The violation is Article 62, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Proposed roof deck exceeds the allowed building height. And Article 62, Section, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, this is Timothy Shan. I'm the architect for this, for this roof deck. This is a two-family house. This is for the people who live on the top two floors, Unit 2. They have no outside space. They would like to build a roof deck accessed by a hatch. The roof deck would be 355 square feet. That's essentially it. Our neighborhood process was not attended. No one showed up for the neighborhood meeting. And I believe we have support from Mr. Armando from the Neighborhood Services.
And tell us about the viewability from the street?
You won't see it from Lawnwood Place, you won't see it. But we're exposed to Main Street and we have a restaurant to the right of the building when you're looking at it from the, from the street. So you will see it from Main Street. There's just no way around that.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
I'm trying to have no new hands raised.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a BPDA design review on the area of the roof deck with special attention to the setback of the roof deck.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're set with that proviso, Mr. Shan?
Thank you, everybody.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 118-4808, 10 Clermont Park. This is a, constructing new steel balcony off the third-floor level and plans at a kitchen of Unit 2. The violation is Article 64, Section 9.4, townhouse, Russell House extensions into the rear yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass, last 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the project proponent. This is a rear balcony at the top level of the building. Here, shown on the section, you can see it is off the top floor in the rear of the building. And it is the standard six feet projecting from the rear facade of the building. Under Article 64, Section 9, balconies above the first floor are considered a conditional use. And therefore, we are seeking a conditional use permit for this balcony.
So is this a one or a two family?
This is a two-unit building, Madam Chair.
Okay, and is that deck bracket supported?
The steel beams will come from the interior of the building, so there, there's no need for brackets. They'll be supported by the steel protruding from the interior of the floor plate of that top floor.
Okay, and is that roof headhouse in place already?
Yep, that was, the building was previously owned by the New England Conservatory of Music. And before that, was owned by a homeowner for 30 years. And during our Clermont Park Neighborhood Association process, it was confirmed that that was an existing headhouse. And we went to Southland Landmarks Commission for repair and replace portions of what's up on the roof. And it has been substantially improved and has been approved by the Southland Landmarks Commission.
Okay, how, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, let go record support this proposal. Counterpart conducting the Butters meeting on May 19th. The applicant went on to the Clermont Neighborhood Association on May 27th. The Civic Association chose not to oppose. The proposal meets the design review standards of the BPDA and the Southland Landmark Commission. We received five letters of support and one letter in opposition. The opposition was based off of privacy concerns. Our office feels that this proposal fits with the character of the neighborhood. There are numerous other decks and back porches on that alleyway. And we don't feel that this would be a hindrance to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, as Mr. Norman just stated, we have those five letters and one letter of opposition.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have some hands raised. Frank, you've been unmuted. Are you here to speak for this proposal?
Yeah, I would like to
Okay, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Frank Cuminello, 12 Clermont Park, Boston, Massachusetts, Unit 4.
There's an echo. I'm not sure if you're on two devices, but we can't, we can't really hear you. Go ahead. Hello?
Anybody here?
Yeah, there's still an echo, but are you on two devices?
No, I'm not.
I think Mr. Duran is going in and out. I don't know if he, he can, John Duran.
Okay, I gotcha. Oh, right. Try that now. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a privacy concern to me. I feel that this deck is encroaching of my condo. There was no deck there. And now there, there seems to be another deck that's being put, you know, this deck. And they already have a deck below, so not too sure why they need two decks when they already have plenty of outdoor space. I have one deck, one bedroom, one bathroom. and this deck will sit directly kind of, you know, adjacent to my deck, and then, you know, I'm not sure if they plan on having noise or people sitting out there, but, you know, could easily be peeking into my bedroom and my, and my bathroom in addition to my deck. So, those are my concerns, you know, definitely don't want that deck put there, and really.
Thanks. Thank you.
Let me just check what caller six, six one seven eight nine.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yeah, we.
Hello, Madam Chair. Okay, Madam Chair, listen, I have a problem because I have seven concerns regarding number six Wall Street, they're building on my building. My building was the first one there in mid eighteen hundreds, the plans are.
Excuse me, sir, we are, we are done with that project. So, we appreciate your input and your comments, thank you. We are now looking at any comments for Ten Clermont Park.
Okay, that's all I have for the raised hands, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPD A design review.
I'll second that motion.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Fortune, Ms. Barazza, what's the design review to focus on?
On the exterior.
Okay. Is, and I, I too am in support, so you're set with that proviso?
Thank you so much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one one six six three five nine, five fifty-five East Fifth Street. This is the proposed addition, new red decks and renovate the existing two-family. Violation is Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the side yard isn't sufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Cameron Merrill, on behalf of the applicant, one hundred State Street, Boston, Massachusetts. Also present is Arthur Chu, architect, and Robert Weisenberger, owner.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Certainly, this is a revision of a, as you can see there, the right side of this property to expand the existing two units which already exist on the property. The only zoning violation which has been triggered is a.
Before, can you please take the time and tell us what's being proposed? What are the proposed additions?
Certainly, the first floor existing unit will be expanded into the basement where you will have a bedroom at the rear of the property and a bedroom at the front of the property. It is a sloping property that goes to the back. There will be a family room in the interior section of the first floor.
And what is the floor to ceiling height in the basement?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Chu, who is present as well on that.
Eight foot ten.
Okay. And this is, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this, is this a one or a two-family? Oh, it's a two-family, okay?
It's a two-family, yes.
Okay, and then it, then the other work is, so, so that's, takes care of the understanding of the basement, what is the other addition that you're proposing?
So the other addition is to enclose the decks which appear to be on the driveway side of the building, and also expand the living space on the second and third floor going towards the rear of the property. However, those expansions on the rear of the property will not exceed the existing setback except for the deck extensions. I believe there was a comment earlier about some trees at the rear of the lot, they will not.
Can you, can you please stop? It looks like this building is an attached building.
Yes, it is.
How will it look from the street? Is there a rendering, is it going to mirror the other side, or is it not?
It, it will be very close, it already is not the same today. And with the removal of the decks, it will be different in that you don't have the decks there, but it will maintain a very similar roofline entryway, but, but it will not exactly mirror it.
Okay, and then the other question is, what will be the sizes of each of the units?
The first, one is seventeen oh two, and unit two is sixteen seven zero.
Okay, and then what is required on the side yard and what are you proposing?
So as you can see from this picture, the upper level, which is shaded blue, will be built along the interior shared lot line, and therefore encroaches on the setback of three feet by three feet, extending along the existing non-conformity, and that is the only violation on this property.
Okay. Um, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
I'm Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support of this proposal, thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have one hand raised, I just want, Susan, do you have, are you here to give support on this project or opposition?
Um, I'm just a little confused, I met with Bob the other day, I just found out about the project, I'm directly behind him. I have the garage, I just wanted to make it clear, I brought my plot plans to Bob, that my property plot plans, two of them, go back three feet. So, as long as he understands, he understands that, and he understands where my property line is.
So, um, Mr. Tardo, hold on, Mr. Tardo. We are just here to prove the, the, or review the proposed additions, the decks. Any property line issues, you will have to sort it out in some other format, because that is not something this board is equipped to address, okay? We will also encourage Mr. Weisenberger and, and his representative to have a true sit-down with Ms. Tardo and solve this, this problem, okay? And in the meantime, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPD A design review and with no bedroom units in the basement.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so the motion carries with those two provisos.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one two zero zero seven nine zero, seven oh seven East Fourth Street. This is a proposed new roof deck to build off the top level of unit two. The deck porch would be supported by roof covering on a roof on our unit's lower level. The violation is Article sixty-eight, Section twenty-nine, roof structure restriction. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Ben Gallagher. Mark Lacass is my representing attorney, this just on previously. I'm the current resident of seven oh seven East Fourth Street. It's a two-family building, I'm on the top level.
Uh, is Mr. Lacass on to speak on this project, or are you going to carry the ball on it?
I see his name twice on the attendees list.
Here, Madam Chair, members of the board, sorry about that, it cut out just as you were introducing the case.
Okay, go ahead then.
Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, seventy-five Arlington Street, attorney for the homeowners Ben Gallagher and Caitlin Burke. Perfect, if we can hold it at that screen right there. So, as you can see in the section on the lower left-hand side, it's a three-story building. The proposed deck is off the top floor, so it's sort of like a walkout terrace rather than a roof deck. And the unit in question is unit two, and it consists of the top two floors of the building. So essentially, they're putting a deck on top of their second floor to be accessed by a straight walkout from their third floor living space. The deck is a hundred sixty square feet and will be accessed by a door off the living area on the third floor.
And this is not a new construction, it's an old building, right, Mr. Lacass?
Correct, and it fronts on East Fourth Street, and it's a through block to the back of Emerson Street. So there's sort of, there's a street in the back that goes on a diagonal, and most of the homes on East Fourth that are along the back of Emerson also have decks on the upper levels as the street goes on a diagonal.
Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
The plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go record in support for this proposal. We also want to recognize that a few hours ago, we did receive two letters of opposition, just based on the noise that those decks create. But we did have the Butters meeting back in May, and we haven't received any complaints since then, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The counselor sent in a letter in opposition earlier, and the letter results follows. Please know that my neighbors on both East Forestry and Emerson Street, including our seniors and abotters, who were not able to attend the virtual Zoom meeting, have contacted my office regarding their opposition to the project. As a result, the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association has made their own position known to me as well. Opposition from abotters, neighbors, and the civic group stems from the overwhelming large house parties and quality of life issues that South Boston residents have endured for years in the form of loud noise and trash removal, which accelerated during the pandemic. Roof decks are unfortunately a significant contributor to this behavior, and abotters have expressed that granting approval for another roof deck in this neighborhood would negatively impact the current situation and lead to further decreased quality of life for neighbors. The counselor will continue to extend, and it is the neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association on these issues. I hope that the board, I will reject this request, this request.
Anna, just a quick question, has this particular property been, been a problem property? Have these particular residents been an issue?
Well, I, that is, that I wouldn't know that this particular location has been a problem property. But it's just an issue happening throughout South Boston in general, and it is a concern for the counselor to have roof decks in South Boston.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else?
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have two opposition letters, and the letters are to what Anna just said.
Okay. Anybody else to speak on this?
I do have a raised hand, caller eleven.
Yes, Madam Chair, again, I'm here to say that the building is nineteen point six feet wide and twenty feet long.
Is that from the previous?
It's, what, what address are you talking about?
The building is nineteen point six wide and twenty feet long, you're looking to put a roof deck on, it's a twenty by twelve.
What, what address are you talking about, sir?
You're building onto someone else's property by twenty-five, by twenty-foot deck, their houses.
I think he might be from earlier.
Whoever's talking, can you put your name and address on the record and tell us right away what the particular address you're commenting on?
The concern is that number six Wall Street, the building is nineteen point six wide by twenty long.
Okay, we are, we are back in South Boston to seven oh seven East Fourth Street. Okay, so Mr. Lacass, can you tell us about the owners and any issues with this particular deck?
Madam Chair, and the owner Ben Gallagher is on, and may wish to speak for himself, but Ben and his new wife Caitlin are new purchasers of this property last year. They have not had any problems, they actually submitted a letter of support from their fellow condo owners in the unit below them. They are looking forward to making this their long-term home, and just would really appreciate the hundred sixty square foot of additional space. They are, they are not a problem property, they are, they are not adverse residents in the neighborhood, and if Ben would like to chime in on his own behalf.
I mean, I'm gonna, okay, let's leave it there, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPD A design review with having special attention to the rear setback of the deck.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're set with those two, with that proviso?
Thank you so much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one one nine one five three eight, Ten St. Margaret Street. This is to confirm as an existing single-family, then add a third-floor addition with roof deck and a two-story addition on the garage on the left side of the house to include extension of living space into the basement. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine, insufficient rear yard setback. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article sixty-five, Section nine, insufficient usable open space. Article sixty-five, Section nine, insufficient side yard setback. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, members, Chris Drew RCA LLC, the project architects. I'm representing the owner.
Can, can you hold on for a minute, there's some echo. Can you just check if your, your systems are all set? Do you have an additional electronic device or anything?
No, is that better?
Yes, thank you, go ahead.
So I'm representing the current owners, Jim and Katie Murphy. Their intention is to expand their existing single-family house to add, there's a two, it was a two-and-a-half story building, to add a full third, third-floor building, I'm sorry, third-floor addition for additional bedrooms as well as the side garage for storage and including additional living space in the basement itself. We will end up lowering the basement height about a foot so that we have a nice, clear eight-foot ceiling down there. But their intention is to enlarge the house for their growing family and stay in the neighborhood. We did go, we did have a ONS Butters meeting on May twenty-four.
Hold on, Chris, hold on. Tell us about that roof deck.
So it's a, it's a small roof deck on the top floor, obviously, it is it's about sixteen by thirteen, access from a roof hatch itself, just so for some additional living space. As you can see from the existing plot plans, the lot itself is, is kind of tight to begin with. They do have an existing rear deck that is staying in place, but ultimately, that's really their only kind of like private outdoor space.
And, okay, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed it, but tell us about the use of, in the basement, what is proposed in the basement?
It's going to be a family, a family room, a home office. Again, because of the pandemic, they found, they're working from home more, and they realize that, you know, working out of the kids' bedrooms isn't so effective.
Okay, and what's the floor to ceiling height down there?
Currently, it's about six foot ten, we are going to be lowering it to eight foot zero.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think you said that already, okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate, I do have a question regarding your side yard setback. What are you proposing in terms of the setback?
So on the, so on the left-hand side, it would be about six inches off of the property.
Right, and your minimum is ten feet? Do you require a minimum is ten feet, okay, thanks.
We do have a letter of support as well from that abutter. And he understands, you know, there's no windows or anything like that in that wall.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office and neighborhood services, let go on record in support of this proposal, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thanks, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor, Sabi George's office, would like to go on record in support of this project, thank you.
Madam Chair, it's Jeff.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to offer the BPD A strong support on this proposed project, and I'm going to switch hats and give a personal support. The Murphys and my family are very close friends, the kids play hockey together. This is going to keep a great family in the neighborhood, so I'd like to go on record, my address is fifteen Glide Street in Dorchester, and I offer my full support for them.
Okay.
Secretary, here, we do have a few letters of support.
Okay, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else to, with hands raised?
I do have a raised hand, Quinn, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Quinn Valdez, on behalf of City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty, we'd also like to offer our support of the project, thank you.
And I'll make you a panelist, Quinn, thank you. No further raised hands for this proposal.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve with a proviso that we exclude the two-story addition on the left side of the house and garage.
So exclude the two-story addition and garage?
Just on the, no, just on this, on the one that, the addition that violates the side yard setbacks. So, an exclusion. So an exclusion of the two-story addition on the left side of the house that includes the garage.
Okay, is there?
I'll second that.
I too am in support. So the motion carries.
Hey, Hanzie, is that something that we can look at through a design review with the BPDA?
Yes, but but Jeff, please, I know, I know you have a personal interest in this.
No, I do, but if you want to take a look at that site front on, it's extremely narrow to begin with.
Got got it, but you know, I we have to respect Ms. Ms. Barazza's opinion on this.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is this is Tom. I was just calling to clarify the proviso a little bit. So it's just no second story addition on the on the left side where the side yard setback is.
So here's another, here's another, I can withdraw that and do a new one, which is to say motion is to approve with the VPDA proviso that the side yard setback is not violated.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Side yard setback not violated. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I have my notes right. Okay. Okay, so there's a second I too am in support. Some motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one one seven three two two four one sixty nine O Street. This is a new decking, green roof pergola and planters on existing roof deck. The violation is Article sixty eight, section twenty nine. Roof structure restrictions, Article sixty eight, section eight, front yards insufficient. Article sixty eight, section eight, side yards insufficient, and Article sixty eight, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz from Adams and Maranti with the business address of three fifty West Broadway, South Boston. Joining me today is Laura Federson, who is the architect, as well as the homeowners, Kristen and Brian Barbetta. So in front of us today is a proposal to construct a new roof deck where there was previously a roof deck in place that was in complete disrepair.
So hold on, hold on, hold on, Ryan. What is the dimension of that roof deck?
So there's a proposed dimension of the roof deck itself right now is a total of two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine square feet.
And what's proposed?
That that's well, that that is what's proposed. The the pre-deck that was in complete repair that was removed because it was becoming a hazard was approximately about four hundred square feet.
Okay, and then I just want to make sure. So it is accessed by a bulkhead? How is it accessed?
So yes, there's an existing bulkhead where you would previously use that to enter the previous roof deck that was there in existence prior.
Besides the roof structure restrictions and the fact that this is essentially replacing a deck, is it the pergola that sends it into 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 our process here?
So 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 I think I think it's a few days because some of them were, you know, pre-existing. But just for the record too, Madam Chair, we went through an extensive community process on this.
I just want facts. I, you know.
The pergola was removed. That was one of the substantial changes that the owners have decided to work with the community together. So there is no longer a pergola on this property, as you can see from page three of the drawings now that has been fully removed.
Okay, so so essentially then, all we are looking at today is a two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine square foot deck accessed by a bulkhead. Anything else we should know?
Yeah, which, sorry, this is the homeowner. It's actually a seven hundred square foot roof deck. The roof itself is two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine square.
Okay, it's so it's seven hundred square foot roof deck. Okay.
So that decking is, but when we factor into the the green roof, there's also a square footage for the green roof that's being added as well as the planters.
But what is the green? What is a green roof?
So so it's more of like plantings and green greener life, and I believe that Laura could probably elaborate a little bit better on that for us.
Yeah, if you go to the the page with the plan, the page before this, you can see a picture of what it would look like. So it's just a low-growing ground cover.
Okay, okay, and I I'm assuming, yes, okay. How are the plants, Ms. Barazza?
The plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support. And we held the abouters meeting and then they the applicants took the feedback and worked with the abouters to gain their support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam of the chair members of the board and I call their own from Councilor Flink's office. The counselor sending a letter in opposition earlier and it reads the follow. Their original proposal was to include a pergola and a and planters on the existing roof deck area. The proponent worked with neighbors to update their plans, removing the pergola, putting a proviso to run with the property as well as pulling the project away from the roof line. However, it is my understanding that the Neighborhood Association voted in a close, split decision regarding this matter. I have also continued to hear from abouters objecting the size of the project as well as as well exit existing City Point Neighborhood Concerns Regarding Noise From Roof Deck negatively impacts abouters quality of life in recent years that were exaggerated during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. A quick comment from any raised hands, Ms. Ambassador?
Okay, Noel Luan had her hand raised. Luan, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Luan O'Connor, Six Shepton Terrace, South Boston.
Yes, can you tell us briefly what your opposition is based on? Anything that the Anna from the counselor's office has not covered?
Actually, Madam Chair, City Point is supporting this project with with a proviso that the pergola be removed and that is to go with the property versus the owner. The property owners have have worked with CPNA and they obtained a vote of support. There were a few abouters that were in opposition and are still in opposition. So we just kind of asked the homeowners to keep them in mind should this be approved.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of support of approval with BPDA Design Review to take to get special attention to the setback of the deck.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set with that proviso.
Great, thank you.
Calling an next case, calling BOA one one seven five three one three two to four Wakala Street. I don't know if I messed that one up. Wakala, this will extend the first floor living space into the basement. The violation is Article fifty, section twenty nine, floor day ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Jose Lopez, the owner of two dash four Wakala Street.
So, Mr. Lopez, tell us what you're proposing to do.
Great, thank you. I'm proposing to add a studio that includes a bathroom, a wet bar, a storage closet, and a mudroom into our basement to accommodate our family member who's come over to help us with childcare now that we have a newborn baby.
So is this a one family or a two family?
This is a two family. We have two floors on top of ours that are the second family.
Okay, so tell us about the basement. Tell us about the floor to ceiling height. And give us details about floor to cell height and and what would make that basement livable for somebody?
Sure. The ceiling height is seven foot from the top of the concrete that's there now to the bottom of the ceiling joists of our unit that's on the first floor. And the sill height for the large window that's down there is thirty-nine inches from the top of the floor.
So the floor to sill height is thirty-nine inches?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so you're having basically a bedroom. What does a wet bar mean? Is that a kitchen? Does it have a stove in there?
It wouldn't have a stove, but we wanted to allow her to have a small sink, a plug where she can plug in a hot plate for tea and things like that, a microwave so she can, you know, heat up food while she's down there, and then a bedroom with a TV and a bathroom for herself to use.
And so this will be permanent residency in this space?
We're unsure yet. Our family member right now is visiting from another country and has a visa and will be with us for a couple of months. And after that, we're hoping that one of our mothers who's working remotely will find out if she's going to continue to work remotely. And they would either be coming from New York or Virginia. It's most likely going to be my mother-in-law from Virginia.
Okay, we what we want to make sure is that there is no intention that this become another unit. So the access to this unit is from the first floor of the space is from the first floor?
Yes, yeah, they go through my my unit, go downstairs. Just to be clear on the record, Madam Chair, I don't intend on making this a unit that would then be rented out. I know there's a separate process for doing that. I'm not interested in that right now. This is just to, quite frankly, help us with our need for childcare and do it in a way that's respectful to our our family members.
Got it. Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
The plans are okay. I would I would have loved to see elevations. I have a question for Mr. Lopez, which is, what is the grade? What is the grade? So for example, in that window well, how high do you have to climb up to reach grade? Or what is the height or what is the height from the floor, basement floor to the exterior grade?
The height from the, so right outside of that window, the distance from that up until the top top of the grass, I believe is about fifteen inches. However, we have a sort of center block thing that goes around it, and so to the top of the center block, I believe it's twenty inches.
Okay, you're the egress well is existing, right? I think I saw from the Google overview that that egress window is currently existing.
Yes, that exists now, and right now, the only thing in that space is it's used as storage.
Okay, and so from the from that basement floor, you're saying at the bottom of the sill, what's the height to the top of the sill?
It's thirty-nine inches. I measured it while I was waiting on the others because I heard you ask.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Jason Gant from the mayor's office and neighborhood services. Just like to go on record in support of this project. And a butter's meeting was held on May tenth where the applicant answered all questions and concerns from the abouters and local civic association as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one one seven four five six four fifty-nine Chickatawatt Street. This is a renovation of the second floor unit, including relocation to kitchen, bathroom, removal of the portion of bearing wall of an existing two-family dwelling, expansion of the third floor attic living space with a new roof and dormers and an increase of approximately four hundred and fifty-seven square feet. The violation is Article sixty five, section nine, the floor day ratio is excessive. Article sixty five, section nine, the building is excessive in stories. Article sixty five, section nine, the front yard's insufficient, and Article sixty five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Daniel McDevitt, attorney, Two Granite Avenue, Milton, Massachusetts.
So tell us what's being proposed?
This family has owned the property for sixty-five years. They want to enlarge the second floor up into already existing attic space by putting a dormer on the on the roof. The dormer is about sixty percent of the roof area. By adding the dormer, it will allow floor area that is already there to become accessible. And that's only about four hundred fifty-seven square feet. So there are no, as you can see from the plan here, the dormer is consistent with what we see in Dorchester. There is no exterior changes to the building other than the adding of the dormer. The violations are.
Hold on, hold on. What are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office and neighborhood services, would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have a couple of letters of support.
Madam Chair, no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forth a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on the exterior.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. You're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one one eight four seven nine six twelve R Plain Street. This is a change of art from an existing carriage house into a single-family dwelling, constructing new exterior stairway, a new second floor, and new roof structure. The violation is Article sixty five, section forty-two point one three, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article sixty five, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty five, section nine, side yards insufficient. And Article sixty five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Timothy Sheen. I'm the architect for the project. I think the proponent David Higgins was supposed to be on. I don't hear him, so I can fill in for him, but um.
So Tim, Tim, right away, we should tell you that this board is not very thrilled about converting carriage houses into single-family dwellings.
Okay.
Tell us what the compelling reason here is. What is what is the main dwelling? Is that already, is that a single family or a two family?
The main dwelling is a two-family unit. It's a two-bedroom on the first floor and a three-bedroom on the second floor.
And it's and it's not is it's not owner occupied, is it?
No.
Okay, I want to defer this to the full board. Okay, so may we have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to the Pearl.
I second that.
Thank you. I too am in support. The date, please?
Yes, that would be a date of September. Hold on two seconds, Madam Chair. Looks like September twenty eighth at twelve thirty.
Okay, so we'll see you then, Mr. Sheen and Mr. Higgins.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one one seven zero six two three ninety-five Wilmington Avenue. This is a constructed dormer, install new windows. The violation is Article sixty five, section nine, the floor day ratio is excessive. Article sixty five, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Harold Raymond, nine ninety-eight Metropolitan Ave, Milton.
So tell us what's being proposed. First, tell us if it's a one or a two-family dwelling and what is proposed?
This is a two-family dwelling. And it's a unit on the first floor, the unit on the second floor. The third floor currently has a small bathroom and bedroom. The family is looking to expand with a dormer to make the the bedroom a little larger, the bathroom larger, and also a family room where they can all meet there. And we're adding about three hundred and thirty-seven square feet onto the, you know, the dormer to expand it there.
Three hundred and thirty-seven square.
Square feet, yeah.
Ms. Barazza, how are the plans?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Dante P. with the office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go all on record in support of the proposal. There was an abouters meeting held by the office of Neighborhood Services on May fifth, twenty twenty-one, where abouters and community members showed support for the proposal and believed it would have a positive impact on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have one letter of support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review with special attention to the roof line and dormer setback.
I'll second that motion as well.
Okay, I too am in support. Motion carries with. Okay, I two them in support. Uh, motion carries with that proviso.
Calling next case, calling DOA one-zero-seven-four-six-one-five-six Warren Park. This is a rehab and existing finished basement. Be used as a family room. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Give me one second. He's on, uh, he's having some connective issues. David, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Guimaris with business at sixty Shawmet Road, Canton, Massachusetts. And, um, so this basement, it's already finished. Uh, it's an old, uh, paneling basement. Uh, what we proposing is just keep the existing layout of the basement. Um, and just update to, um, be newer and safer and clean, cleaner and just.
Okay, so let me ask you a couple of questions. Is this a one-family or a two-family?
One-family.
Okay, tell us what the proposed ceiling height is going to be in that basement?
Seven feet.
Seven feet on the nose?
Yes, finished.
Okay, and, uh, so seven feet finished, uh, and it is a family room?
It is a family room.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
The plans are okay, Madam Chair.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to go on record in support of six Warren. The applicant's notified abutters on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty, and our office has received no letters of opposition for this project. The applicants have also lived at the address for five years and they're just looking to add additional space for their growing family. We do not believe that this project will negatively impact the community and we have no further comments or concerns. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have one letter of support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thanks.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
I two them in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling DOA one-one-six-seven-five-five-eight-twenty-two Sedwick Street. This is a construct a new dormer on the right side of the dwelling. The violation is Article fifty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Ivan Hernandez, one-eleven Baker Street, West Roxbury.
So Mr. Hernandez, tell us, uh, is this a one or a two-family?
It is a two-family house currently. It's to remain as a two-family.
Okay, and tell us what's being proposed?
The proposal is to, uh, renovate the attic, uh, finish the attic, uh, space at third level and, uh, half-story, but, but yet. Uh, and add a dormer on the right side of the, uh, dwelling. Um, it would consist of a new bedroom, bathroom space and laundry area.
So, so this would be a five-bedroom unit? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, I believe it's actually a four-bedroom unit.
Yeah, okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Tiffany Gavialdo with Mayor Danny's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant has received support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. And so the mayor's office would like to go on record in support of this project as well.
Madam Chair, I have no, no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion forward of approval with B P D A design review with special attention to the size of the dormer and your intersection of the existing bridge and new dormer.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, so I'm sorry, the dormer size and the, uh, I'm sorry.
Intersection, intersection of the, the intersection of the existing bridge with the new dormer.
Okay, I have two women support. Uh, some motion carries. You're all set with that proviso.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add really quickly that eleven, um, eighty-seven Saratoga is back on under John Durant. So I don't know if you want to wait till the very end or.
They'll be called, they'll be called at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Calling next case, calling DOA one-one-seven-six-nine-three-six-fifty-four Danforth Street. This is a dormer over the bathroom, renovate bathroom. The violation is Article fifty-five, section twelve, side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-five, section twelve, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Luisa Santos. Uh, address is fifty-four Danforth Street. I'm the homeowner.
So is this a single family or a two-family?
It's a tiny, single family that I call the birdhouse.
Okay, so tell us what you're proposing for the birdhouse.
So I, uh, am proposing adding a dormer on the bathroom. As you can see from the first picture, it's got slanted roof on both sides. And what happens when I try to brush my teeth or wash my face, I hit the back of my head. Um, so it's really just adding a bit of ceiling height. It was rejected because of the side yard and rear yard, um, which is insufficient, but which is not going to be impacted here because I'm building up, not sideways.
Okay, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are sufficient.
Anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Gavialdo here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, my predecessor conducted a community process for his proposal. Um, and the applicant received support from the J P N C. So the mayor's office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, we have one letter of support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
I two them in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Awesome, thank you.
Calling next case.
Oh, Mr. Fortune, you, you phased out for a little while there.
I, I might have fell asleep for a second. No, I didn't. No, uh, calling the next case, calling DOA one-one-six-five-nine-three-five-fifty, fifty-six Lockstead, Lockstead Avenue. This is increasing the size of the existing deck. The violation is Article fifty-five, section twelve, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Frank Shalacy. Good evening, Madam Chair and other board members. I have a single-family residence at fifty-six Lockstead Avenue.
So tell us what you're proposing to do.
So I'd like to take my, so I live on a single, a single-family only street in Jamaica Plain, except for my house. On to the right of me is a commercial building. It's a, um, facility for the handicapped. And there's, um, buses and vans that go in and out of there on a, you know, basically constant basis with beeping and so forth. There's employees that congregate and smoke outside. So I'd like to extend my deck over towards their property line and put a little, um, fence up so I get a little bit of privacy from them.
Okay, so what's, what is, is the, the dimension of this, uh, deck that you're proposing?
So I'd like to extend it out another approximately eight feet.
Okay, and how close to the property line does that bring it to?
Two feet.
Inside, to the side property line, it's within two feet.
That's right. That's correct.
And this, on the, I'm sorry, Madam Chair for interrupting, on the plot plan, it says it's one feet from the property line.
Yeah, I'm not going to go that far. I'm not sure why the plot plan shows that, but it's going to be about two feet from the property line.
Okay, and how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
The plans are adequate, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tiffany Gavialdo, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Given that I do not have any letters of opposition, the mayor's office would like to go on office in support of this proposal.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a B P D A design review with two proviso, B P D A design review and with no side yard violation.
Um.
Second that motion.
Wait, wait, hold on. Um, Ms. Barazza, though, without a side yard violation, it just essentially means then that the deck could not be built in the side yard, right?
Well, if it's, if the minimum is ten feet, right?
Yes, so essentially it sounds like his enclosed porch is within ten feet off the property line.
Right. I mean, the property is pretty large. It's about eleven thousand square feet. I, I don't see why can't go to the rear without violating a side yard setback.
Okay, uh, I two them in support. So the motion carries.
So I'm not sure I, I understand that. So I'm trying to get privacy from the neighbor, not, not going to my backyard.
So, um, so, uh, you came to us, you asked us, and we just, we, um, in our wisdom, uh, suggested that in fact this deck would be too close to the property line. Um, and that you have other options. So the motion is for approval with design review without, um, violating the side yard.
That's correct.
Okay, so good luck on that. Um, may I have the next case?
Yes, calling a next case, calling DOA one-one-six-five-two-four-five, forty-one to forty-one A Green Street. This is at forty-three Green Street, installing new deck. The violation is Article fifty-five, section nine, the front yard setback is insufficient. And Article fifty-five, section nine, the side yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is Michelle Carey. I work for Payne Boucher and, uh, I'm representing our client, Elizabeth Stifel. Uh, my address, my work address is one-seventy-three Norfolk Avenue in Boston, Mass.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Okay, so what we're proposing here is, um, so Elizabeth has owned this property, um, for, uh, for a few, few decades now. And there was once a, a roof deck on, uh, the, the place in which we're proposing. She had to take it down to do roof repairs and she is, uh, seeking to have it reinstated, the new roof deck rebuilt in the same footprint that was previously in place, uh, with a design that marries aesthetically, uh, with the design vernacular of this house. And we triggered the setbacks because this used to be a storefront, um, prior to being, uh, a home. And so the home is, you know, right on, uh, the, the property line.
So, oh, so this is Green Street. Um, so, okay, I just need to take a step back because the address is forty-one to forty-one A Green Street. And you're proposing a new deck on forty-three? How does that work?
Yeah, you know, that's a very good question. We're, we're not quite sure why it is listed, um, as, as forty-one and, um, forty-one A. But that is how it is, is deeded and it's, it's in fact forty-three. But that is if you've, if you, um, it was pulled as a forty-one, forty and forty-one A because that is how it's listed under, um, the, the property.
Okay.
With, with the city.
And it's a single family?
It is. It's a single family.
And is this the part of Green Street towards center?
It is. It intersects with, um, uh, was it Rock, Rockview?
Rockview, right. Okay, always thought that was an interesting house with those, um, the side, side, I don't know what they called, eyebrow windows or something. Um, okay, how are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Gavialdo here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal has undergone its community process where it received support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council and directed butters. So the mayor's office would like to go on, on record in support of this proposal.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Do you have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with B P D A design review on the exterior deck.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, uh, I two them in support. So you're, you're all set with that proviso.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-one-eight-four-six-five-two-four Cuthbert Road. This is a construct a fourteen-by-twenty family room addition to the rear of four Cuthbert. The violation is Article fifty-six, section eight, the rear yard, rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin, should, Kevin, you've been unmuted? Go ahead. Hi Kevin, can you hear us? He's on as a panelist. I'm not sure what's, what's happening here.
Ms. Barazza, in the meantime, how are the plans?
The plans are okay. Could be a little bit better.
But, but you understand what it's, what it's trying.
It's a, it's a very modest, um, build-out.
Okay, uh, can we get Mr. Foley in?
He's on as a panelist. I'm not sure what's. Just stopped up. Oh, no, he's still there. Kevin, can you hear us? Don't have any message from, messages from in the chat and he's on as a panelist. I'm not sure what's happening.
Okay, why don't we come back to this? In the meantime, let's move on.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-one-nine-one-nine-nine-four-forty-nine Martin Street. This is a master bedroom addition above the existing sunroom for existing owner. The violations are Article fifty-six, section eight, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good evening to, um, Madam Chair, to the board, uh, to the committee. Uh, my name is Derek Rubenoff of Derek Rubenoff Architects at eighty-two Spring Street in West Roxbury.
And. Being proposed?
What's being proposed is, uh, an existing single-family house, uh, with a sun porch on, uh, that's existing on the side. There's a, a second floor deck that's existing that doesn't really get used by, uh, the family with, uh, two young, uh, daughters, Casey and, uh, Dan Miller, the owners. They've been there for several years now. And, uh, what they'd like to do is get a little more room in their house for a master bathroom. There's no room, um, on the second floor there for an additional bathroom. They need it with the family. So what we're proposing here is a simple nine by, I think it's about twelve or thirteen feet addition above this existing sunroom. So there's no additional change in, uh, there's no change in the footprint of the building. All we're looking to do is.
Tell us what the side yard requirement is and what, what the side, current side yard is.
Yeah, certainly. It's, uh, the side yard requirement is, uh, ten feet. And, uh, what's there right now is eight foot six and three-quarters. So we're not making that any worse. We're extending a non-conformity that.
Yes, got, got it. It's just that it's a second floor addition. So, you know, we need to kind of understand that. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just want to go on record in support. The applicant went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on, uh, May twenty-fifth and received their full support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no hands raised.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with B P D A design review on the exterior.
I'll second that motion.
I two them in support. So you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Foley is on. I saw him come in on the last call. I can recall that if, uh, we can unmute him.
Let's, let's go ahead.
Can we unmute him to make sure he's on?
Yep, Kevin, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
All right, let me just, let me, so let me just call it back for the record, calling DOA one-one-eight-four-six-five-two-four Cuthbert Road. This is a construct a fourteen-by-twenty family room addition in the rear of four Cuthbert. The violation is Article fifty-six, section eight, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Uh, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Kevin Foley for Cuthbert Road.
So tell us, is this a one or a two-family dwelling?
Uh, this is a single family dwelling.
Okay, and you're just off of Bellevue, okay? And this is a fourteen-by-twenty family room. Is, uh, and Ms. Barazza, the plans are adequate. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just want to go on record in support. Uh, the applicant went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on May twenty-fifth and received their full support. In addition, he has, uh, support from the immediate abutter in the rear. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have a letter, a few letters of support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with B P D A design review.
I'll second that motion.
I two them in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling DOA one-one-eight-three-six-one-four-sixty-one Oakland Street. This is a dormer on both sides of half of the house in the. This is a dormer on both sides, a half of the house in the attic addition, two bedrooms, one bath and a staircase going up to the second floor. The violation is Article fifty-one, section nine, building had successive stories and Article fifty-one, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
So what case is this?
This is Oakland Street.
Oakland Street.
They were on the phone earlier, okay. Hi, Mr. Yee, you've been unmuted, I couldn't make him a panelist, but can you hear me?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair, members of board, my name's Kevin Yee, I'm the, uh, owner at sixty-one Oakland Street.
Okay, so tell us what you're, is this a one family or a two family?
This is an existing two family up and down, um, both units are two beds, one bathroom.
Okay, tell us what you're proposing to do.
Uh, we're proposing to finish the attic space, adding a dormer to the right side, um, to add an additional two beds and one bath to accommodate my family.
Okay, um, and let's see, um, tell us about the side yard on that side. Um, what is, what do you have and what's proposed?
Um, so, after getting the, uh, initial refusal, I had my architect redesign the, uh, layout so that it's only dormering on one side of the house. Um, so that would be the right, right side facing the front, um, so there would be no side yard setback.
Yeah, cause you have that, you have that corner locked, so that's difficult, okay. How are the plans, Ms. Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services, like on record in support of this proposal. Uh, the mayor's office conducted a butters meeting on May fourth. Butters were pleased to see a family moving into the neighborhood and that there would be owner occupied on the second floor. Um, there was some concerns about possibility of weekend work, so we just asked that the applicant work with residents to make sure that, uh, he's informing them of construction plans and being respectful on the weekends. And, uh, furthermore, they went on to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, received full support from them as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is Maureen McCree from Councilor Braden's office. The council would like to go on record of being supporting, uh, being in support of this project, thank you.
I know it's getting late, isn't it?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Uh, do you know who Philip McGrail is, uh, Ms. Ambassador?
Oh, sorry, just saw that, sorry, Philip, go ahead, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Philip, go ahead, can, can you hear us? Are you speaking? Didn't send me a message earlier, so I'll send him a message, not sure what's happening. Phil, can you hear us? Not sure, Madam Chair, I have no, no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review, um, taking special attention to the size of the dormer.
I'll second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-one-nine seven-six-eight-five one-eleven Arlington Street. This is in addition to the rear of the house, a new master suite, kitchen and new roof siding. The violation is Article fifty-one, section nine, side yards insufficient and Article fifty-one, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Karen Ailward, one-eleven Arlington Street.
So is this a single family or a two family?
A single family.
Okay, and tell us what are you, what you're proposing to do?
Um, we're proposing to add a two-story addition off the back. Um, the first floor would be a new kitchen and our existing kitchen would become a playroom for our three children. Um, and the second floor would be a master bedroom and bathroom, um, again, just to give an extra bedroom.
Give you breathing space, got it. Um, what are the plans, Ms., uh, Barazza?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Mayor's office like to offer its full support, uh, this is an opportunity to keep a family in the area and, uh, well as an owner occupied household. Um, we had the applicant flyer the neighborhood and we received multiple letters of support indication from State Rep Kevin Honan's office that they were in support. And then also the applicant went on to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, received their full support as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is Maureen McCree from Councilor Braden's office. The council would also, um, like to go on record of being in support of this project too, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we, secretary here, we have a couple of letters of support.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, Philip had his hand raised for the previous, um, uh, case, but he's all set, so that I have no additional hands raised.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to set, uh, a motion for approval with BPDA Design Review.
Second that motion.
I two him in support, so you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the last case of the night, calling BOA one-one-four one-seven-eight-eight eleven-eighty-seven Saratoga Street. This is the correct and existing code violation of a basement unit by remove, by removing the basement kitchen and door unit and separation between unit one and basement. And then extend living space into the basement area from unit one to connect directly into the first floor unit and remove this rear, second floor interior stairs and construct a new exterior stair from the existing rear porch. The violation is Article fifty-three, section nine, excessive FAR. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, this is, this is, uh, John Durant. Uh, I'm the general contractor. I'm, I'm the contractor of the, of the property. Uh, right now, we're trying just to, uh, make the basement part of the living, uh, space in the first floor. So it's a owner occupying the first floor, we're just trying to, uh, remove the kitchen as the gentleman said before. So we just try to, uh, add a little bit more space for a growing family.
Okay, so tell us, is this a one family or a two family dwelling?
Uh, that's existing two families.
It's an existing two family?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, uh, with this plan that I have up, do you have any bedrooms proposed in the basement?
Pardon me?
Do you have any bedrooms proposed in the basement?
Uh, there is currently two existing bedrooms and then we proposing to add the window wells to meet the current code.
Okay, and tell us, uh, what the floor to ceiling height is in the basement? And what the floor to sill height is in the basement?
Uh, it's, uh, over seven feet high. And, um, the basement is, I think it's over fifty percent on the, um, less than fifty percent of the ground.
Okay, um, Ms. Barazza, I need your help on that, on this one.
I'm sorry, can you, uh, can you repeat again, what is the bedroom window height to the sill?
I'm sorry, uh, it's a forty-two inches, it's a window wall.
And, uh, what's the height of the exterior grade from the interior along the bedroom wall?
Um, I'm not quite sure with, uh, dimension, but as far I know, that meets the current code. We don't need to do, um, a big hole for the well.
Okay.
It's accessible basically from, from any bedroom, uh, to exterior, it's, uh, accessible, very accessible, English.
Okay, and is there any kitchen in the basement?
Uh, it will be removed, that's part of the proposal, cause there's not going to be any kitchen in the basement. Just the two bedrooms, our living room and, uh, and our existing bathroom.
Okay, so unit one, how many bedrooms will that have?
Um, currently, uh, it's three bedrooms, so it's gonna be total of five bedrooms.
Okay, and where is this project, this is in East Boston? You know that, yes, but, and you know that no more than four unrelated individuals can live in this space? So unless you have.
I know, it's currently a family, it's, um, Mr. Chair, um, Chairman, Chairman, Mr. Chirpa. Uh, I know his wife, uh, toddler, his kids, and I think it's, uh, it's more than, more than love, it's just related, everybody's related.
Okay, okay, uh, and Ms. And the floor to ceiling height you said was seven foot plus? But you don't know exactly. Okay, Ms. Barazza, are you, are you comfortable with this?
So the elevation that you're showing, it's showing that majority, well, you're only showing one elevation, but majority of the basement seems submerged from that one elevation that you're showing.
It's, uh, just in the back, which is basically taking the living room and the mechanical room, which is separated from the.
Okay, so it's, so the, so the slight slopes, so meaning that the front elevation, okay, got it, okay.
Basically, the front bedroom is gonna be more high to the middle bedroom, the more, um, underground level is gonna be the mechanical room, which is not, uh, living room space.
Okay.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Um, my counterpart conducted in a butters meeting on February fourth, twenty-one. And they received support from the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council as well. I think this is an opportunity to keep a family in the East Boston area, thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have one letter of support from the, um, sorry, Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, but we also have four letters of opposition in regards to it being a legal basement, um, and the concerns that the people that are living there are not related.
Okay, so this is to pull, to make this, to legalize the basement occupancy. So this hopefully will get, will get the community to a better point. Um, okay, anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, um, Madam Chair, I just have a question, this is, this will still remain as a two family, correct? Because you're extending, okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve with, without building code violation on the interior connecting stairs.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I two him in support, so you are, uh, approved uh, for the proposal, but just make sure that you meet all building code requirements, okay?
Correct.
Okay, so the meeting is now adjourned, that was the last project. Thank you, everybody, uh, and, um, Mr. Fortune and Ms. Barazza, see you on Tuesday. Have a great weekend.